Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, November 16th at 6:00 PM. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Spigot, will you take us through the agenda, please?
Absolutely. So, appointments this evening, we have 6:00 PM Phil Wolf, East Bridgewater Fire Department, to kick off the Toys for Tots. At 6:05 John Haynes, EPW Director, to discuss EPW staffing. And at 6:30, we have the poll hearing.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody here for open forum? All right, if no one's here for open forum, I will close open forum and go to our appointments. And I think Rebecca, you said that Phil Wolf is not coming.
Yeah, Phil unfortunately won't be able to attend tonight's meeting.
Okay.
So I don't know if you guys want to just discuss Toy for Tots at all.
Do you have the, is the information here?
I didn't see it. What do you think, Brian? Do you want to talk about this or?
You can talk about the drop-off locations and stuff. You have that, right?
Well, we haven't got confirmation on all of the drop-off points, but Town Hall is a drop-off point.
Okay.
And so we will be collecting them here.
Yeah, and pending approval, possibly the library, possibly the senior center, the Y.
Yeah, that's it, and Town Hall.
In the fire department.
The fire station.
That's all pending approval. If we do have a meeting on November 30th, Phil will be able to come and kind of give more of a better update.
Otherwise, we'll put the website.
Otherwise, yeah, we'll put it on the update.
Okay. And I think we might actually have a meeting next week instead of the 30th, right, Brian?
We might have one on the 23rd.
So, maybe he can come.
Maybe he can come back. We can get it approved.
Okay. And I don't see Mr. Haynes at the, here he is.
I'll just, I'm going to call the health first.
That's all right. You're actually early, but we're running early since our 6:00 appointment isn't.
I wasn't aware of the new.
Here, so. How are you?
Good evening.
Tell us what we can do for you this evening, Mr. Haynes.
Thank you. So, tonight I am asking for consideration to fill the remaining vacant position in the Highway and Grounds Division. As we discussed when you, when I was here in September and we just filled the, we had two vacant positions as of September funded, they've been existing positions, they're not new, but we had an employee leave and then we had another employee transfer. So we filled the employee's position that had left, and now what I'm requesting is that we, the board would consider filling that position as we enter what can be our busiest time of year, the winter months. Again, it's a existing position within the department and, as stated in the letter, I think things have stabilized a bit, so I feel comfortable where we are and the ability to manage financially moving forward. And we actually had a good pool of candidates from our previous round of interviews, and right now we have a, we have an opportunity, we actually have an intern who's been working with us for now six weeks, and I hope, hopefully she'll look at, you know, applying for the position and potentially moving into that, you know, full-time opportunity.
And this is money that's already in your budget?
Correct.
For this year anyway.
Appropriated, yep. It's a, been a position that's existed in the budget. You know, Highway to Division's had nine employees for more than 15 years now.
Okay.
But it's not a new position, so it's going to just fill out existing.
Okay. I think, you know, and we'll discuss, and, you know, we talked about it before, and I know that you need it. My, my concern going forward is just we don't know what next year's fiscal year is going to look like. You hate to hire somebody thinking, hey, but guess what, we're going to, you know, let you off in six months.
Oh, absolutely.
But you also have work that needs to be done, and we don't want to stand, you know, we don't want to stand in the way of that. So, I don't know, David?
No, I, you know, we've talked about this, you know, ongoing for the last six months or so, and, you know, we did go through the period of time when we, we felt that you could leave it vacant, and, and you survived, obviously. Now, in the event that we don't have much snow at all this year, I'm sure that this position is still going to be carrying a workload.
Oh, absolutely. There's never a shortage of, of work in Public Works, is out of the name.
Right, okay. No, I'm good with it.
Peter?
Yeah, I think the discussion that we had back a few months ago was to move in this direction, and it's good to know that the person that you, you know, hope to see take that position has been in place, and I'm assuming doing some of that work already.
Yep, very pleased. Again, it was an internship opportunity with a program we patented with. They actually, Rob Kenner actually made the initial contacts, and so from that point, they were actually reimbursing the town, will be reimbursed for this, you know, period of time. But she's worked out wonderfully, everyone's rave reviews, and she talks about making public works a career. She's looking at it from, you know, she'd like to be me someday. It's perfect.
There's only one you, John.
Have you filed your papers yet, John?
How many is your retirement?
Well, Max is, what, nine, so at least another 12 will all work out just right.
When do you hope to fill the position, John?
I would hope, you know, obviously going through the process, I'd anticipate the first of the year when we'd be looking at, you know, permanently.
Now, where did this person come from for the internship?
You're going to ask me the Bay Path Career Placement Internship Program, I think it's referred to, so out of Brockton. So there's opportunities for, for women and minorities that, you know, are interested in the construction trades and things like that. So it has a, this is actually the third time we've actually tried to get a placement with different people, and they tend to get scooped up before they, because the, the training actually gives them career apt, you know, they take this career aptitude opportunity, and then they'll assist them with training to get their CDL, their hoisting license, things like that, which makes them incredibly valuable in what's become a very limited workforce at this point. So it's opened the door for a whole new field of potential.
Glad Brad Kenner followed through on that. It's obviously what.
Yeah, no, kudos to him for following up on it, because it's, hopefully it will pay off and, you know.
Good.
Great.
I'll make a motion to allow DPW Director John Haynes and DPW to fill the position at large for the labor position, is what it is.
Yes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, it just, I forgot, in addressing the finance standpoint, we have actually made some concessions working with our union and stuff as well. We're looking at, you know, the, the positions that left were equipment operator positions. The last two we've filled, you know, negotiated with them, filling them at a lower grade, bringing them in. So there's actually some substantial savings there between the, the grade change and the longevity, and we think, again, that it gives us some flexibility moving forward, and we have to look at what I'm sure will be tough financial decisions in the next four to six months.
Mr. Noble, would you make note of that? He's got extra money. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Thank you.
Go forth and higher. All right, we have, oh, yay, time to kill before the poll hearing, so.
The one.
Move to action items.
Approve and not release minutes of the September 28th, 2020, 6:30 PM executive session, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 To approve minutes of the October 5th, 2020, 6:30 PM Board of Selectmen meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Approve minutes of the October 19th, 2020, 6:30 PM Board of Selectmen's meeting?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Approve minutes of the November 2nd, 2020, 5:00 PM Board of Selectmen's meeting?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 To discuss appointment of Eric Cardoza as an Associate Member of the Historical Commission to fill a vacancy November 16th, 2020 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Mr. Cardoza is here. Do you want to come up and say hello to the board and all our fans in TV land?
Yeah. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Be here to get involved and help out wherever needed.
Sure. Maybe you could just tell us briefly, you know, why, what your interest is in the Historical Commission.
Yeah, well, I was interested in getting more involved, like with the community, and also like with, like, public service and different things like that within the community. We moved to East Bridgewater a couple of years back, and so we've been here a little over three years now, I think. And I went on to the website, and I was looking at the different, like, committees and boards and things like that that I could get involved in, and I was interested in, too, the agricultural committee and also like the Historical Commission. And I reached out to Rebecca, and I let her know what I was interested in, and what my experience was and why. And she got back to me and said, you know, there was an opening with the Historical Commission, and Dale invited me to come in and sit in the meeting. And while I was there, actually, there was a gentleman who came in and kind of shared a story of how he was trying to get a building in town where he rents to get on the historic register so that they could apply for a grant. And I thought, like, if I, yeah, if I could get involved with something like this and help out a business owner, I mean, think of the difference I could make for him if he was able to get that grant and do the rehab on the building that he needed. And so I really thought that there was a lot of opportunity where we could actually help people and make a difference, and I just wanted to be a part of that, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Any questions?
No, thanks.
I think it's great to see people step up, especially fairly new town members. I do know that, you know, in discussions I've had with the town librarian, there's a lot of artifacts and historical things, as Carol I'm sure knows, around.
There's a couple.
Yeah.
Hopefully at some point, you know, we can, we can see a place where all that can be brought to and, you know, see this, this committee strive.
Yeah, I know, my great-grandparents and my grandparents ran an antique store in Boston for many years, and, and it was passed on to, like, my uncle. So I've been, like, around, you know, different historical, like, artifacts or artwork and things like that for my whole life.
Great. Well, we had a letter from the Historical Commission saying they approved and recommended you unanimously. Dale has said great things about your enthusiasms.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we have a motion.
Yep.
And a second, any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
You need to get sworn in by the town clerk.
Okay.
She can help you with all that, but thanks for coming in, and thanks for volunteering. We appreciate it.
Eric, it's just the beginning.
Next up, a run for public off.
They have you, they have you now.
It's true. And you asked. Okay.
All right, moving on. Review and sign agreement with the energy, energy conservation for energy savings, lighting improvements at the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Noble?
Sir, this is a proposal for, that our facilities director brought forward for energy savings in our largest user of electricity, which is the junior senior high school. This would be the first floor lighting project. This would be dependent, of course, on funding at town meeting on December 7th, but in order for us to get on the list to do it over the Christmas holiday, because they can get it done that quickly, we need to commit to doing it, but pending funding. So they understand that. Because the contract is over $50,000, I'm presenting it to the board for approval.
Should we amend that motion to put that on pending funding?
It, it is pending funding, but I would appreciate if you put it into the motion.
Yeah. Want to change that?
I have just a crazy question, I guess. The school only being a six or seven years old, was the lighting not available at the time when they?
The school is only six or seven years old, but the plan to design the school was done 10 years ago with the electricity at that time designed to the, to the state of the art. But the world has changed, and we're going to replace them with LEDs. So the, as you can see, the payback period is about three-point something years, so it's very attractive. And they, they support it with some funding, and, and it's an interest-free payment. The town share, which is $65,000, is interest-free, and so we'll be actually paying them out slowly over time on the electric bill, but we'll appropriate the money at town meeting. It, it's, it seems strange, I get it, to be taking out the fixtures that were in a new school, but the technology has changed that dramatically that when the school was designed, you wouldn't have put LED in, they didn't exist. So now they do, and we get higher efficiency at lower cost.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
No, I just think we have to amend the, the action item to just add the words.
amended to say.
Pending funding.
Pending funding at town meeting.
Okay. Review and sign the agreement, energy conservation for energy savings, lighting improvements at the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School, approval of town meeting.
Pending funding. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Appoint Peter Spigot Jr. to serve as a signature member of the Old Colony Metropolitan Planning
Organization, OCPC, term November 1st, 2020 through October 31st, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, this came up when we, in one of our packets recently, and myself and John have done a couple of projects with them in the past, and I thought it'd be a, a good opportunity, especially with some of the things we got going on in town now, that if we got a seat at the, the board, we could potentially get some, some good use out of that.
Yeah. It's a, it's a valuable resource. I appreciate you stepping up and volunteering to take it on, because it is a lot of, a lot of things.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussion? David, did you want to thank Peter, too?
Thanks, Peter.
Yeah, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Don't worry, David.
Find out how many different hats you want to wear this year.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Appoint Jason Trupania, thank you, to the Central Plymouth County Water District Commission Advisory Board.
Second.
Any discussion? Brian, did you want to thank Jason for telling us, because you involved?
I was going to say it was going to have to be me.
Johnny, want to say something about the, the position or the, what the actually entails? Do you know anything?
Rebecca, do you want to help us?
I don't even know what the.
Zach, you want to help us over here?
I believe it's, it's, it goes up the entire water.
Water shit.
Resource area, the water area, there's numerous communities involved that represent the Tonka River Water Shit area.
Okay.
And this previously, I'm both health agent, was a representative, and so Jason and I, Jason rolls downhill, so Jason has been appointed, and is more than willing to serve.
Great, great.
So again, it's, it'll be interesting to give us some insight into the water, the entire Water Shit district and the management of that.
Great. All right, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jason.
Approve the request from Diane Kennedy Wackel of East Bridgewater Quonass Club for the use of Town Common from November 23rd, 2020 through December 3rd, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM for tree decorating contest and lighting of the Town Common Tree. These events will not be open to the public this year. Participants shall follow state guidelines on social distancing and safety.
Second.
Any discussion? I don't know.
I had a long conversation with Diane Walker Kennedy today on how we're going to do, especially the tree decorating portion of it. Originally, they thought they may not have enough applicants, but I guess there's been 15 of them.
Okay.
As of now, and then Diane went up and talked with Sue Malloy up at the Board of Health, just to make sure that when these people are decorating the trees, that it's a small group, social distancing, and the next group would be two or three trees after, and they'll all have different time segments.
They'll stagger them, yeah.
And do these. And when they have the, I think the last thing is when they had the judging, it would just be the judges there, and then they'll notify the winners after the fact. The tree lighting itself, when that takes place, again, it will be, they'll just be turning on the light, from what I understand, there'll be no public thing, there'll be nothing there, they'll, they'll just turn them on, and they'll stay there until the end.
Yeah, it'll, it'll just be a couple of Quonans.
Right.
That the, and we'll be doing the tree and the gazebo again, like we've done the last, the last couple of years. And I think Dale and I are donating that tree. I think that was the decision that we made, so.
Thank you.
Donate the tree, and Quonass will provide the lights, and we'll have Christmas cheer no matter what, by gory. All right, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it, right? We didn't have any additional action item.
None here, none that I see.
Okay. We've got, you have nine minutes, Mr. Noble, to kill.
You have two.
Okay. I'd like to tell you that, thank you, Brian. We're going to try something a little unique tonight with the National Grid Rep for the public hearing calling in on go-to meeting.
Oh.
And thank, I wouldn't have tried this if Brian was not here, so, those are the value of Brian, and so, and therefore, if it fails, it's not me. And so let's go through the, the good, good things. The Department of Revenue has approved our tax recap, and I want to thank Paula, Phyllis, and Melissa for killing themselves to get this done, and, and I'm particularly pleased that the Department of Revenue challenged us, but we, we clearly met the challenge, no problem at all. So, thank you to that team in the back. The House has reviewed the governor's budget, and they've made some changes to the forecast, and our state aid will be, if the House budget passes, will be increasing by $8,400. So, I didn't think that the number changed significantly enough to bother to go back and redo our numbers, so we'll just put there. In the, in the week just passed, we did get the Governor's Order Number 55 on the protocols for the uses of masks and face coverings. We have revised our policy and issued it to the, to the employees of the town to be in compliance. We've also updated our return-to-work protocols in compliance with the changes that were made recently by the Mass Department of Public Health, and we've also issued those today so that we're in compliance. Before you tonight is another proposal from Maya about locking in our insurance rates for the next two fiscal years. As you know, this year, our insurance increased by 0.26%. We did take advantage of the prepayment incentive, so our total cost of insurance was $382,950, which is the property and casualty, professional lines, the workers' comp. This does not include health insurance. Oh, that we should be so lucky. In 2022, they've offered us a zero increase, which is great, and in FY '23, a 2.5% increase. There are, they have adopted the new workers' comp rates that were passed last month, and there is only one caveat, that we have to maintain a favorable loss ratio for all lines of coverage below the 60% line in order for these rates to remain in effect. You know, I, gosh, and I hope we, I really think we shouldn't have any difficulty with that. I'm going to ask the Board of Selectmen to approve for several reasons. One, we're talking about $400,000, $392,000 one year, and $382,000 the previous year, and we've already approved this year. So, because of the size of the contract, I thought it was important to the board to review and to agree, and to pass a motion to allow me to exercise that option.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, I guess, yeah. Fine. To approve the three-year contract with Maya for the property casualty insurance.
Great, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
There you go.
Great, that's my update. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We're going to need you to take another five minutes.
Well, so far, I haven't seen him come on here.
Okay.
Rebecca, any staff updates?
I wish I did, I don't.
Discussion.
Discussion, board discussions? Peter?
Yeah, I have.
We usually have something.
I do, I have something here, yes. So I have already spoke to Mr. Noble about this, I don't know, a week ago, so when it came in our email, I'm just going to pull this down. So our email that we received back on November 4th was from Michelle Hardy and Brett Hardy, the owners of the cinema across the street, asking to, if there's any way that the board could find a way for regarding their licensing, entertainment license, food license, whatever it may be, to help them in some way. And the discussion I had with, with Mr. Noble was, you know, if we did it for one, does that mean we have to do it for everybody? And it was a valid point, but thinking it over the last few weeks and knowing the work that they do in town, it's really our only entertainment source that we have, now that, you know, the rec, the old rec department that we had, Viking Rec, is gone. I think it's important, at least to show some goodwill some way, somehow. I don't know if, you know, Town Council needs to look at it to see what could be done on an individual basis versus a town-wide. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of money, but I think with, with two people like this who have been more than cooperative in, in the town and with different charities, I think it's our, you know, it's important for us to show at least some sort of.
We may try to do it earlier, have to do a session.
Help in accordance with whatever, obviously, Town Council says. So, I mean, that's really what I wanted to kind of bring up and discuss and see what your thoughts were as well.
There is no hardship provision in the law, so we would definitely have to discuss this with Town Council.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Peter. You know, that organization has done an awful lot for a lot of the groups in town, and I think for something totally beyond their control, I, I think we should move forward and get direction from Town Council. And again, if this happens in the future, it will be, like a lot of the other things we have done in the past, it's a case-by-case basis, and everyone should be reviewed separately. We're certainly not opening a door for everyone that, you know, may come in front of us, but let's get the first step, and not from Town Council, and see where we can go from there.
Okay. It's the only movie theater in town. I would hate to.
Right.
Hate to lose that. It's, you know, one of the few things for kids to be able to do and families, so, all right. We will take that over to Town Council. Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Dave?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to, you know, thank, you know, the town clerk and her office and all the volunteers that got us through this last election. It was incredible to see the, the amount of work being done the day of the election. For the time I was up there, we seemed to run very smoothly. They were given a gargantuan job, and they came through tremendous, and just kudos to everyone that was involved in it. It's really a great job.
And I bet you're so glad it's over.
They were still calculating when I was down there earlier.
And we're not a state that's going to require you to do a hand recount.
Just one other thing. Historically, over the last few years, we've always had a greeter at the front door of Town Hall, which is a part of the tax work-off program through the assessor's office and the Council on Aging. And they have requested to see if we can commence that beginning December 1st. And one of the reasons I think it's a good idea is we have equipment there when people come in to, you know, sanitize their hands and then face, face in and get their temperature taken, but there's no one doing it. I mean, every time I come in, everyone just walks by, they don't start, they don't do anything. And Brian said last week, he was on a call with the state, you know, asking, you know, towns, can they do more for tracing and stuff like this? I think this is a fantastic opportunity for us to show, you know, we're really getting involved and, and don't let anyone buy there. I don't think, well, I shouldn't say it, but I don't think it's a big thing to get Plexiglas out there, get it situated where the greeter would be behind that, and just asking the people, please, as you go by, to, you know, check in, and so we know you've been here and your temperature's okay, and we, you know, we'll be helping those people out besides, again, showing that we have a great interest in wearing masks and doing everything else that's available.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, so we can keep that person safe, you know, because it is someone in the older population, but.
They've all been asked.
I think that's great.
I mean, they've asked, you know, they've volunteered, they understand what they'd be doing, and I'm sure Nancy will be giving them, you know, some kind of indoctrination into it, that you have to stay here, you know, you, this is the job you have. I mean, if they, some office has a manual work, they can do it at the same time, that's fine. Your job is to make sure when people come in, they're checking into the town.
Right. Okay. Good. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. And, oop, it's 6:30.
So I'll probably just reach behind you and apologize.
So do you want me to move?
No.
I can?
You could at least smile for the camera, Karen.
I am smiling. You can't tell?
No.
Here it goes.
For sure, Brian, there's an easier way to do this. Okay, the voice that you hear, no image, is going to be TJ from N Grid. TJ, can you hear me? Wait a minute, I apologize, I haven't turned the speaker on. TJ, are you there?
I am.
Look at that.
So before you're with the Board of Selectmen, we don't see a picture, because I guess you're on your cellphone?
I am.
Okay. So, so.
Yeah, I missed it much.
The Board of Selectmen, Peter Spigot Jr., Carol Julius is chairman, and Dave Shidi is vice chairman. Our hearing is a public poll hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to Carol, because there's a procedure we have to go through.
Thank you very much. Peter, would you read the notice, please?
Under provisions of Chapter 166 of General Laws, and any additions thereto or amendments thereof, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on November 16, 2020, at 6:30 PM on the petition of National Grid and Verizon covering joint National Grid/Verizon poll locations to relocate Poll 41 and install Poll 41, One Oak Street. The hearing will be held at East Bridgewater Town Hall, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Mass 02333.
All right, so this hearing is officially opened, and I guess we just need to hear on the reasonings for it, and I don't think there's anybody here to speak on it other than a representative, so.
TJ, it's now your turn. Would you identify yourself for the record and make your presentation, please?
Sure. My name is TJ. I work for National Grid, and I'm calling in on behalf of one of our customers at 559 Oak Street. They have a new facility there, and where their driveway enters the Oak Street, there's a pole right in the center of their driveway. So the request is we had it moved, and by doing so, I created a larger span on one side of the driveway, so I had to install 41-1, and that's where that additional pole comes in, just so I can have that support.
Okay. Thank you very much for the explanation. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Nope, and no one is here to speak on it, so.
This particular resident he's speaking of did call the office and say that he is definitely for this.
Okay.
Pole to be moved, and he's looking forward to this happening as soon as possible.
That was the resident at 559 Oak Street?
Exactly, yeah. Okay. Very good. I think that's it.
Close the public.
Close, I will close the public hearing on the, the change in the poll location. Thank you very much, CJ.
No, no, you need to.
Nope. Oh, sorry. I'll take a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to relocate Poll 41, install new Poll 41-1 on Oak Street, National Grid and Verizon poll location.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Good. TJ, you're all set.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. I don't think we have anything else to discuss, so I will take a motion to close our open meeting and go into executive session and not to return to open session.
I'll make a motion to close the Selectmen's meeting Monday, it's the day, November 16?
Actually, we're not closing the meeting, so you have to.